Mayor Rowan Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
President.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Honor Woman Luanna Odinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. In your booklet, you have copy of the minutes of previous meetings from regular session May 14, 2024. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions? Hearing none, in our town motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Right, have motion on the board to approve the minutes of May 14, 2024, as presented, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclamations and the recognitions of citizens by the mayor, which I have none at this time. Communications for my city administrator, Mr. James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have a couple of things. One, just a reminder that we will be having the second in the series of our summer concert series this Thursday at seven o'clock. The band will be The Griffin Band. It's the first time they've been here, so interested to see what they do. And we had a really good turnout at the last one, about 300 people, which is about as many as we've had at any during the entire run of the concerts. And so that puts us back to pre-pandemic levels. So we had a really good turnout. Also would ask that y'all suspend the rule and add something to tonight's agenda. An event that the city is wanting to put on back here on the Riverwalk for July the 20th. We had planned on putting this on the July council agenda, but then we decided, determined really, that we needed to put it on tonight. So I apologize for it not already being on there when your packet came out last Friday. But we, and discussing with some of the vendors that are going to be involved and looking at what we needed to get done before the next meeting date in July, was determined we really needed to get y'all's approval tonight. So if you could, we'd appreciate it if you could suspend the rule and add this back-to-school event for the Riverwalk for July the 20th. We'd appreciate it.
Motion to suspend.
So.
Second.
Right. Moved.
No problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Also, don't have a definite date, but we hope to have another trash pickup before the July 4th holiday, the round litter pickup around town. So that's all I got.
That's short and sweet, James.
Trying to keep it moving.
All right, item six then is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A is consideration of reappointment to planning commission, Mr. Randall Freeman.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
All right, have a motion on the board to consideration of reappointing Randall Freeman to the planning commission has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B is consideration of reappointment to planning commission, Mr. Rick Carr.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion then to approve Mr. Rick Carr's reappointment to the planning commission has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Consideration of appointment, the Cock County Library Board, Ms. Linda Hampton Parker.
Motion approved.
I'm sorry, that reappoint, there's an appointment.
It's her position, but they have, she has stepped down and they have requested a new member in Michelle Black.
Okay, that wasn't on the.
Yeah, it's on the orange sheet.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, Ms. Black.
Second.
All right, have a motion on board then to approve the appointment of Michelle White to Cock County Library Board has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Did I mistake something?
Michelle Black.
Michelle Black. Said Michelle White.
Sorry.
Okay.
Pull it together.
Yeah. It's been a long couple of days.
It is.
But anyway, we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All and nays like sign. Hearing none, Ms. Michelle Black has been appointed to the Cock County Library Board. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Don't think we have any. Item eight, old business and unfinished business. Item A is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2024-03, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read that caption into the record. It's ordinance number 2024-03, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2023-2024.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2024-04, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2024-04, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2023-2024 for Newport Grammar School.
Motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2024-05, budget for fiscal year 2024-25 for the city of Newport.
And that's ordinance number 2024-05, an ordinance for the city of Newport, Tennessee adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025.
Heard the ordinance. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, have a motion on the board, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion of barge design contract for the Richmond Park project.
Last month, the resolution that was approved to hire Bard was for, and it's in the resolution for stormwater survey and design documents for stormwater retention once the design, or not, once, the design documents, once the stormwater survey is done. And I had a contract that I gave to Trey to sign what you did, which was for just the stormwater survey. So I just need him to sign the contract that is for both, so I can send it in.
We need discussion. Happy to sign it.
Thanks.
I think we need a motion.
Need a motion?
Motion.
To allow me to sign it?
Yeah.
Is that what? Okay. All right, we have a motion. Been seconded. Please signify acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. New business, consideration of resolution number 2024-09, accepting a newly constructed street built as part of the Loves Project and make it an extension of Generation Drive.
Okay, if you guys have been to Loves, I'm pretty sure everybody has at this point. It is the connector between 2570 and Carson Springs Road that they built as part of their project. The early on, sort of the handshake agreement was that once it was constructed to city standard that we would take it in. And of course, this has been, I mean, we met with Loves in 2018 or 19, so it's just one of those things that didn't get done. So we need to properly accept the street as a Newport city. Street is built to our standard. It was inspected way back when. It's held up for a couple of years now, so I think it's in good shape. And if anyone's worried about the cost of maintenance, I think that Loves is generating enough revenue to pave it and patch puddles every now and again.
Okay, heard the resolution. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve resolution number 2024-09, accepting a newly constructed street built as part of the Loves Project and make it an extension of Generation Drive. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Consideration of resolution number 2024-10, accepting funding from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation through the American Rescue Plan Act for the purpose of wastewater infrastructure replacement.
Okay, stay with me on this one. Newport was allocated $1.7 million in 2020 for, well, there were two pots of money. This one was the one that was, it was only specifically for wastewater, drinking water, and stormwater. And we didn't have any sort of stormwater project ready to go. They needed something ready to go. They needed P E R and everything. Well, NU does have sewer replacement project. There's one in Nor, there are two in the city limits, one in Northport, one in Richmond Park. They're having I and I issues over there, which means that when it, there's holes in the pipe somewhere, when it rains, the wastewater system doesn't just get the, you know, what goes down the drain, it's getting what goes down the drain, plus everything seeping into the pipes, which isn't good. States told them they got to fix that. So they had a multi-year build-out on how to replace those two systems that affect our residents. They came to me to ask me what we were doing with our funds, because if you don't use them, it goes back to Nashville and it goes wherever they decide. This is a non-competitive round of funding. There's another round of funding up where they take all of the leftover money and then you apply for the grant money. So all this was, was we submitted the project proposal, which is for Richmond Park replacement of some sewer pipes there, which is a thing they already have their preliminary engineering report for. So it was, I'll say easy, none of this is easy, but it was the easiest thing we could do to get it in under their deadline that TDEC had. And so NU's hired their own engineer, which is Duke Engineering, they're drawing up the plans for it, they're, NU's paying them all. And the original project that I put in for was the whole shebang down there, which is about 3.8 million, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. And I put in there, and you would pay for the rest of it, and they didn't like that, I get it, because they were only budgeting 500 grand a year, knock it out over a couple of year phases. But, so what we're going to do is just submit the project, or resubmit the project, the project proposal to TDEC to show that we're only going to, we're only going to do a project that is 1.7 million, just as much as we've got. If there's any overrun, it's going to be on NU's back, because it's their project. So all I need is the approval so that we can, Trey and I've had several conversations, it's really annoying, because we have, I've had the same conversation with eight different people. And it's, so they're so, TDEC's so big and the, and the project managers they've hired aren't even local, so nobody really communicates. But we've got a, we've got a little bit of an extension on it, because once we do this, everybody else is doing it, hasn't even gotten engineering started yet. We're ready to roll, even though we're behind in TDEC's eyes, we're two steps ahead as far as the overall project's concerned. And so Mr. Fincham was the one that said that it was, he thought it was okay, since it was an NU project in city limits, and I agreed with him on that. So as long as you guys are okay accepting the money, once we have the actual project scope, we can put it in front of city council for approval. But right now, this is just to accept the funds from TDEC. And I think the resolution allows Trey to be the financial officer, which is what, that's a TDEC thing, that's not a our thing, so.
Heard the presentation. What's the board's?
If you have any questions, I can go back and try and reconnect the dots, it's just, if we don't use it, it goes to Nashville and it goes and gets used in some other community that probably doesn't need it as much as ours.
We don't need to give.
Well, this is a project, like Gary said, it's technically, it's a wastewater project which makes it our, our problem, not NU's problem. It's creating a septic problem, waste, you know, through the, down at the sewage treatment plant, because stormwater is going to the sewage treatment plant. So that's where it becomes an NU problem. But the wastewater problem is our problem. So technically, it's, you know, they can put all that on us to pay for. So this is a golden opportunity with this ARPA money, and a lot of people call it COVID money, to address at least a big portion of that with federal money and not our, just our money. And so I thought that was an excellent use of the funds when, when, you know, we determined that that was going to have to be done over there and we were going to have access to this money. We didn't know the scope of what it was going to cost until it came back a lot more than what we thought it would be. But, yeah, my only stipulation to Gary was, when they first contacted us about this, and this was a second batch of money, you know, the first batch, we bought the Woodland Park with, and we've done some improvements around the other city parks, bought some properties up on White Oak and so on with that money. But this money could only be used for infrastructure, as he mentioned. And so, you know, I was good with that, that's like I told Gary, as long as it was in the city. I didn't want to give nearly $2 million of the city's money to do something that wasn't in the city. So it was a perfect fit when we determined, you know, we were going to have to do this sometime down the road, so why not take advantage of it while we were getting this money to at least do as much of it as we could with that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve acceptance of this money and give me permission to, to sign the contract. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Item C is consideration of request to access accumulated sick time for a city hall employee.
Mr. Mayor, this is for Tiffany Ball. She is our council member clerk here at City Hall, and she went out on maternity leave, and she did email me information or a letter, you know, requesting this, and I would like to approve that. And the request is that she be allowed, if needed, to get into her third bucket for any accumulated sick time while she's on maternity leave. And again, I do approve this, and I would like to request that you all grant her this.
Board's pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consideration of request to access, accumulate sick time for a city hall employee. Ms. Tiffany Ball has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D is consideration of hiring a full-time position for animal control. Good evening.
I'm requesting your approval to hire Carl Lee Overhope from a part-time employee to a full-time employee. He's very dependable and dedicated to his job. He's been with my department for 12 years now, and I want to keep him. On the submitted request in your books, you can see a brief summary of how important he is to my department. His devotion to the city of Newport and to animal control has been amazing. But I thank you for your consideration of him going to full-time, please.
Another thing I'd point out on this, when Lisa brought this to me and we talked about it, she's having a really tough time in filling her part-time positions at the, at the animal control facility. And so Lee has had to work extra hours routinely to try to help take up the slack for being shorthanded. So I, you know, number one, he's stuck with us all these years, and he's proven himself, and he's working extra hours already. And so I think that we should reward him with making him a full-time employee and letting him have some benefits and stuff, instead of just working pretty much full-time anyway and not getting any benefits. So I'm with Lisa. I would appreciate it if y'all would reward him. I think he's earned it, and I would appreciate if you would reward him with a full-time position and benefits.
Okay, heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the hiring of full-time position, Mr. Carl Lee Overhope. Has been properly seconded. Please signify acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mayor, do we have any update on the new facility for animal control?
We, we getting ready to hopefully make a move on the property we're buying from Newport Utilities down in the industrial park. The acreage that we're going to use to make the deal with Mr. Nayland down here, that's going to get him from downtown and down into the industrial park and open this up downtown. It's, a lot of the investors have requested that, and are, that's kind of what they're using for an excuse to hold up moving forward downtown. They want that cleared up before they spend any money on their properties. So we've done, Gary's done a great job in trying to get that to happen. It's been a challenge finding something that Mr. Nayland would be pleased with. Y'all approved the transaction way back. We've been waiting on NU to get it to where we could move on it. They were waiting on the survey of the property that came in today. And so as soon as we take possession of the property and everything's laid out exactly where, we're going to let Gary and Mr. Nayland work out exactly where he wants to go, and then we're going to have some leftover property and we're going to put the animal control building on that. And as soon as I know where I can put it, we're going to get moving. We're getting ready to get our second installment of the Mulvey Foundation money of $100,000. I was also informed today. And so we've got $100,000 in the bank, and that's going to give us another $100,000 to go with that to get our construction started. We don't know exactly, because we haven't gotten with the architect yet, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost, but we've got, we'll have a $200,000 down payment on it. And we've, we've been saving money for it, so we're going to have the money to build it, but it's not going to be a problem. And then the Mulvey money will pay us back over the years, up to a million dollars. So it will probably cost a million dollars to build it, I'm guessing. So, but we'll, I'll have more info on that later after we get the architect to look at it and we can move forward. But hopefully today, we hit a milestone. We, they're ready to start drawing up the paperwork so we can actually purchase the property. We've been waiting on them. We've been ready to go for three months, and we've been waiting on that next step in the process to where we can buy the property.
Now, the county gets a million too?
They're getting, they're, they're, that was also resolved, I was told. And the other million is being split between the county and the Humane Society. So the county's getting 500,000, but in 10 installments. So theirs will be 50,000 a year. Of course, they'll be owed a hundred, they'll be owed 50 for last year, which they didn't get. So they'll get 50 for last year, 50 for this year. So, you know, I haven't had discussions with CJ or Rob about that yet, because it was up in the air, I wasn't going to get into hypotheticals, but I'm hoping they will put that money into the building process also.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
If I'd have had a definite thing, I would have had that on my agenda, but I don't have any kind of timeline yet, so.
Get closer.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, did, I think we had a, do you have a vote on this? Yep. Item B is consideration of annual highway maintenance contract between the state of Tennessee and the city of Newport.
You're good. This is the, this is the maintenance contract we've been under since 1994. And every year on an annual basis, we have to renew it through the state, and it's for minor maintenance on state highways within the city of Newport. And so it's just that time of year again. Now, one thing, just for your information, when the new bypass gets open, there will be some of that in the city. And there has been some discussion about, do we want to take more of that in the city? And so that's going to come down to how will that affect this contract? Because, of course, it's a new road, and theoretically, it won't have anything wrong with it for a long time. But if we take it into the city, we'll be responsible for it under this contract. And the big question is, will they increase the amount of this contract if we take in more road, or will it stay the same? So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but that's just a heads up about something down the road. But this is the, it's the same contract with the same terms, same amount, no changes that we've been under for a long time.
Okay, heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Okay, then, consideration of annual highway maintenance contract between the state of Tennessee and the city of Newport has been put in motion and properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item F is proposed playdate downtown for late July event. This is the event that we have suspended rules to hear the presentation.
We're planning to do an event, hopefully if you all will approve it on July 20th. It's going to be more geared toward children, but it's still going to be a family thing also. We'll have Caroline give y'all a little handout of all the different things we've got. It's still in the planning stages, but we've got quite a bit planned already. With your approval, we can go further with advertising and all that, so if you want to.
Yeah, well, it's good to be here for the first time, as I joined city hall about three weeks ago. But yeah, so this event, it'll take place behind the city hall on the Riverwalk. There's nothing inside. We're not asking for any roads to be closed. We might close out the parking lot here, but I've talked to James about that, and it should be fine. But yeah, the idea is to get kid, people to bring their kids down here and hopefully maybe start what could eventually be an annual event. We've been, Monica and Gary have been working to help us join a Main Streets program, Tennessee Main Streets, and this is something, you know, that they look for, for us to like get people down here. And if people come down here with their kids, you know, maybe their kids are going to go get some ice cream and spend some money and just keep, keep the downtown growing and thriving. And so we think this would be a really fun way for people to get down here. And we would also, if you all want to be part of this in any capacity, we would love that, so just let us know. We have our contact information on there. Yeah, thanks.
Well, one thing, I'll put a plug in for the girls. They've been going around gauging interest from downtown business owners about this, and there, there's a lot of interest to do this and participate in it. And as they said, you know, it's, it's big on our priorities to become a main street city. And this is just one, this is one of the hoops you have to jump through to, to meet that criteria. And because that will help us get more funding for projects down the road. And because that will help us get more funding for projects down the road if we can get that designation. And it just, it takes years to do it. We've been working on it for two or three years before Monica come on board and...
Yeah, we're just about to finish it up, the application, and this is one of the requirements to have successful events.
And when Gary moved to Gatlinburg, I put Monica in charge. She was already assisting Gary with the Main Street program. And when he left, I put her totally in charge of it. So she's taken it by the horns and is running with it. And Caroline has been helping her with it and I think they make a pretty good team and I'm very pleased with what, what they've been getting done.
First presentation was the board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. We have a motion on the board, it's been properly seconded. Please signify acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And ayes like sign. Congratulations, you have a playdate.
Thank you all very much.
Item number 10 is bids, purchases and expenses, consideration of purchase of garbage compactor for the city of Newport.
Okay, this, this one's a little, little complicated. Back at the end of the year, the county decided to go to all compacters in their convenience centers. By compacting their garbage, it cut down on their trips to the landfill in Morristown. They pay by the trip. And so less trips meant less, less pay, less cost. So Mayor Mathis came to me and said that if we wanted to stay with the old system, and it's what Ben calls 40 yarders, which is 40-yard open truck trailers that just haul garbage, and which we pack it in there as much as we can, but it doesn't do what a compactor does. And then we would have to eat the cost, like the savings that they were getting, we would not be getting. So we had two options, to go to a compactor or eat the cost. Okay, I let that go for a few months to see what that cost would be because I had no idea. And so it's averaging about $2,500 a month for us to pay the surplus cost to stay with the old system of the 40-yard trailers and making the extra trips. So it took me a while to get some info on a commercial-grade compactor, but was finally able to get it with Ben's help and Chan up at the landfill, the supervisor up there, Chan Embry's help, I was finally able to get the info that I needed. And it's in your books, what a commercial compactor looks like, the dimensions, the cost. The cost is a little fluid because the estimate is 75 to 80,000 because we have to have, doing it at a commercial level, you have to have what they call a hopper, which is just a giant funnel that goes on top of it, that you dump the garbage in and it funnels it into the compactor. And so that thing's 25 to 30,000 and has to be built to specs. So there's not a flat, well, here's exactly what it would cost. You don't know because they have to build it to fit the need and the, the space out there at the transfer station and so on. But it's 70, it's estimated at 75 to 80,000 because the county doesn't have to have that. You go, I'm sure all of you have probably may been to one of the compactors and threw some garbage in or something and you throw it in by hand and then it, it compacts it. We will be, because of the volume that we do, we would have to dump it with a, with a piece of equipment, with a front end loader. So we have to have the hopper to dump it in. It's the only way it'll catch it. So what I propose to do, and as you see in my numbers in there, you know, that's, if we keep, if we have to pay the surcharge to keep doing it the old way, that's going to cost us 30,000 a year. So at 75 or 80,000 in less than three years, this thing will pay for itself. And so it's just the technology that the county has moved on to, which is a good idea on their part, it just puts us in a situation where we, we have two choices. And it's to buy this expensive piece of equipment or to pay the, keep paying the surcharge. And so my recommendation and Ben and discussing it and with JR out at the transfer station is we think this is the best route to go, but it's ultimately y'all's decision. Either one of them's going to cost us money. You just got to decide which way you want to go with it.
Okay, first presentation was the board's pleasure.
I'll make the motion to purchase it, second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then for consideration of purchase of garbage compactor for the city of Newport in the amount of 80,000. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is consideration of bids for two four-wheelers for the Newport Fire Department.
Good evening, board. What the Fire Department's doing is kind of planning ahead for the, for our Woodland Park area and, you know, the nearly 100 acres that, you know, people will be walking on and going around. So we're, we were looking at, at items and that's where we decided to come up with these four-wheelers that are, that are kind of smaller, able to maneuver around the trees and different areas that will be off trails and, and they're a little quicker for us to get to. So we had put it out for bid. We had three bids come in and Waynesville Cycle Center out of Waynesville, North Carolina was quite a bit the cheapest on that. At, for, they were 7,014 of four-wheeler and that would put it at 14,028 for both four-wheelers.
And the department has budgeted the money?
Yes, this, this money, we actually had this in the budget and this has actually come in under budget, what we had, what we had planned.
Okay. First presentation was the board's pleasure.
Motion, man.
Second.
We have a motion on the board for consideration of bids for two four-wheelers for the Newport Fire Department in the amount of 14,028. Has been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. One thing too, before you leave, if you guys will look out, our new fire truck is parked outside that we ordered in December of '21 and it's finally come last week. So, and it's actually going to be displayed at the Firefighter Smoky Mountain Weekend in Gatlinburg at their convention center this week. So, thank you, guys.
He is very proud of it, too.
Item C is consideration of bids for concrete and water drainage system for the Tanner Building.
Hello again, everyone. We did a bid for water drainage and concrete for the Prospect Avenue, Avenue side of the Tanner Building that would create a foundation for storage, that'll help a place for the patio furniture for Water State. And it's also very eroded, which Mike knows from, from seeing that. It'll, it'll take care of that drainage area and it'll, it'll look beautiful, I think. We've got two bids for that. One of them was for 18,500 from JS Lawn and Garden Center. We've got another one from Williams Lawn Care for 18,700. I'm recommending we go with the one that's 200 more because they can actually complete the project within this budget year. That's the only reason, they're both very qualified. So I would like to go with Williams Lawn Care if you all would approve that.
And just for the record, too, just a little preliminary thing, again, since Gary left, you know, Gary was in charge of the Tanner Building. And since Monica's been up there running the, the welcome center, she's been assisting him in that capacity. So when he, when he moved on, I appointed her in charge of the Tanner Building. So in addition to being in charge of the Main Street project, she's also in charge managing the Tanner Building. So just, just for y'all's information for the record, so, and that's why she's here on behalf of the building and making this request.
Okay, first presentation was the board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of bids for concrete and water drainage system for the Tanner Building with bid coming in under Williams Lawn Care for 18,700. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
I take that back. We need a roll call though.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We now at a point where we will consider comments from citizens.
I'm kind of new to the area. A neighbor can attest to. Last December, we had the Christmas parade.
Pete, just, sorry, but please, please enter your name into the record, please.
I live at 415th College Street, Kenneth Nicky.
Okay, thank you.
N-I-C-K-E-Y.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, sir.
That's okay. We just, we, for the record, yeah, thank you.
It's been a long time since I've stood in front of a city council meeting. I did notice that there was a major danger point that could get the city in big trouble from the Lincoln, Second Street to Broad Street. That is so dark that no one sees the walkers or any of the space. And with the kids running out there, a lot of people didn't know and there was no security on that intersection. I stepped up, being that trained an officer, I wasn't prepared. I didn't have a vest or a light, but I did do traffic control the best I could. But that's something we got to be careful of because you cannot see from the top of that hill down to the bottom if anybody's down there. And there were kids on the rock side of the street running all the way out to get the candy. And people were trying to come down from Third, down Lincoln and could easily run over those kids. So it's just something we have to keep an eye on, make sure that maybe next year we have enough security people. And I'll be happy to volunteer next year if we need to, just to protect the kids because I don't think we need the lawsuit against us as a city for some kid getting hurt. I mean, that's, other than that, you know, we can knock out the problems with the rest of the parade, but security-wise, that is a very dark area. We need to kind of emphasize that because you cannot see the van walkers or anybody up in that area. And see if some of the cars, you couldn't even see until they crossed a certain part of the, of the hill. And that's my only comment and only suggestion, that we just keep that in mind for next year because it was a good parade. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Nicky. Thank you for your concern. Okay, any other citizens who want to comment?
Hello, my name's Shane Wisner. I use the tennis courts down here and they're all cracked up. So I was wondering if there was anything in the budget for resurfacing them at some point. I know I spoke to the high school, the coach, and he was saying that he has to take the team to, and all the home games are away. All his matches are away at other high schools because they can't play on those courts. So I was wondering if it was in the budget for resurfacing.
Is that at the city park?
Yeah, the city park, right.
You agree with that?
The, we've had several discussions about it. Of course, Tim's not here tonight. He had, he had to be at the doctor today all day and will be out again tomorrow. But we have talked about that at length, about the cracks in the, the playing surface over at the tennis courts. And Tim says that we have redone them twice and they, it only lasted a very short period of time and they come right back. And so we're trying to determine why that is. What, there's some underlying problem and we're guessing because of the water issues that, that we have over there, the high water table and because we've, you know, ever since Tim's been here, since he came in '94, he's been fighting that water over there, putting in more drainage, more drainage, more drainage, trying to get that water out of there. And so we, we're trying, we're trying to determine how that's happening. Something is causing that because it should last, you know, you have an expectation that when you redo a service, it'll last X number of years. And so these are not. They're only lasting two or three years and the cracks are right back. And so and then in the wintertime, they fill up with, they get water in them and then when it freezes, they expand and get bigger and, and so it's definitely a problem. Yeah, we're aware of it. But until we can determine, and he's trying to find somebody that has expertise in that. I don't know if we will have to do some core drilling down in there or what, but you got to find somebody that can, that that's what they do. And so the last time we talked about it, which has only been, it's been since first of the year, I know, he was trying to find, come up with somebody that could come in and give us an evaluation and hopefully a determination on why these cracks come right back when we resurface. And so there is not currently any money into resurface because, you know, we talked about it during the budget process, did we want to look at trying to resurface again? And Tim's recommendation was that we not, until we can determine what's causing the cracks to keep coming back, to reform. And so we did not put any money into the budget to resurface because he said that they only come right back again. And so until we can get some kind of a solution, and we may have to, he said his fear is that we're going to end up having to dig down deep to get down to the, to where the problem lies. Because it could be several feet down to wherever it is that's, that's, that's causing this to shift and crack. So he's really worried that it's going to be a very expensive project to dig down deep to find it. It's kind of like the same deal we have over here on Broadway. You know, they, every time they resurface Broadway, they talk about digging down and fixing the underlying problem, but then when it comes time to do it, it's so expensive, they just put a patch on it and keep going. And so that's the fear over there, that that's going to be a problem, that it's going to cost us a lot of money to fix. And so that, I hate the, it is in poor condition. We, we definitely agree with you. And we'd love to, if there was a simple fix to it, we would resurface it and then go on about our business. But it's not a simple fix. It's a major problem. And, and it could be, you know, it may not, it may be so expensive that it's not even feasible to, to repair it. You know, I don't know. It depends on how deep we're going to have to go and what the prospectus is on the scope of what it's going to require to solve that problem. So right now, our, our position is it's better to have something than nothing. And I hate that.
It's hazardous.
That's, that's, that's a poor, that's a poor solution, but, but that's kind of where we are on it. Thank you for, for your interest, but I wish I had a better answer for you.
Any others?
Water, groundwater surveying, a barrier?
Well, Tim's, Tim's working on it. I don't know where he is on it. He's looking into the options on what he needs to do to get it evaluated. I know that the conversation that he and I had, we talked about, there probably would have to be some kind of a core drilling to go down to try to see what's underneath there. Is it sediment? Is it sand? Is it raw? I mean, what, you know, what's lying deep down underneath because we don't know, so...
Think if I come back to the next meeting, you'll have some kind of answers?
Well, I mean, you, you feel free to call to him and ask him, you know, his office is at the community center and he's available to anybody, you know. You could call him and ask, you know, and ask him, you know, tell him you'd like a little, like to know where we are on it, that you came. Normally he's here, but he couldn't be here tonight because he had a, he had a personal issue that caused him to be out today and tomorrow. But, but I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss it with you because he, he likes, you know, keeping people informed on what's going on at the park.
Thank you.
Sure. But you're more than welcome.
But you're more than welcome to come back too. But, but, you know, but that would be a quicker.
He runs the Parks Department?
Yeah, he's over Parks and Rec and his office is at the community center.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments from citizens?
Hearing none, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We will be counsel and I will be adjourned to a executive session and we stand adjourned here in regular session.